I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Joe, we have some exemplary people in the room.
We do. We have a whole bunch of folks. These are the people I've been telling you about for the past few months as we've been approving different positions throughout the, since really since last spring. So I'm going to ask if the, if the new teachers can stand up when I call their name. I'll call them out by school. So if you could just stand and give a big smile. The board has seen your, your names in their agendas for a couple of months now, so I wanted to put a name to a face. So at Font Hallow, grade four, Chris Boozy.
Welcome.
At Special Education in Font Hallow, we have two new teachers, Megan Cowick and Megan Heine. One of our new kindergarten positions, Allison Partridge. And in Physical Education, Pam Pascarella. And in Music, Alejandro Jimenez. God, I think it's five new teachers over at Monroe Elementary, two speech and language pathologists, one working in the building, one working at the pre, in the pre-K program, Molly Johnson and Rachel Wyberg. In Special Education, Christina Marin. Grade four, Sabrina Phillips. And the new reading specialist over at Monroe Elementary is Christine Rosati. At Stepney, we have our new multilingual learner teacher, Ashley Lopez. Three, three new special education teachers over at Stepney, Janine Martin, Michaela Triscriti, and Erin Sweeney. The other unplanned for kindergarten position, the Jessica Trombetta. And in grade four, Madison Vin Tresca. At Jackie Hallow, we have grade six math teacher, Matt Underko. Social Studies, Joe Filbrick. Our speech and language pathologist, Liz Ulrich-Moran. And our new art teacher over at STEM, Kelly Tanian. And finally, at Massey, giving us some nice culinary delights, our new culinary teacher, Amy Bien. Our new career in technical education/business teacher, Alison Danzo. In Chemistry and Biology, Audrey Falsetti. Our new lead teacher of the Monroe Community Program, Sal Longo. And finally, in Spanish, Jesse Todd. So 26, 26 folks here tonight due to us. So we welcome all of them and we're excited. And I know Bill Bittar did a really nice article on each of the, each of the new teachers in the Monroe Sun. So thank you all. If you remember from our PD a couple of hours ago, you're more than welcome to stay, but you can definitely go home if you want.
Thank you. Welcome and thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to public participation. We have some people signed up and then I'll open up the floor. Please remember that the board allows up to 20 minutes for public participation. It is a comment period only. Don't expect a reply. It's not a question and answer from the board. You have up to three minutes to say what you want to say. You're not allowed to despairingly talk about any student or staff member specifically by name, but compliments are welcome. So Marie Blake. Hi, Marie.
Hi.
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road, Monroe. Two weeks ago, you heard many glowing testimonies about Coach Christie and teacher and coach Eric Giordano. Tonight, I'd like to focus my attention on the board's response to the allegations against these two individuals and other teachers, as well as against members of the administrative team. A total of seven Monroe Board of Education employees were named in this incident report. As I am sure you are aware, this case/incident report falls under the Freedom of Information Act, which allows anyone access to this information. An internal investigation was conducted. DCF was notified and the Monroe PD was notified. The building principal investigated. DCF found no evidence to support an investigation and the Monroe PD, through its investigation, found the allegations, allegations to be unsubstantiated against all seven employees. The incident report was first lodged on June 2nd and appeared to be closed on September 1st. All allegations were found to be unsubstantiated by the Monroe PD. Woo-hoo! We should be elated. All allegations were unsubstantiated. But I know by your actions that you, the board, were not satisfied with this process. You voted unanimously in an executive session on July 5th to hire outside counsel to conduct an independent investigation even before the Monroe PD investigation was completed. If you had confidence in the internal investigation, Swenson, DCF, and the Monroe PD, you wouldn't have hired an outside counsel. Why didn't you wait for the Monroe PD report to be closed and use the results of it to dictate your actions with regards to Christie and Giordano? You can't claim that you wanted an expedited investigation because today is day 76 of your investigation and as far as I know, it did not conclude today. As an outsider, I am left to draw two possible reasons for your independent investigation. One, you do not have confidence in DCF's decision or the Monroe Police Department's investigation. Or two, you are continuing to pursue this investigation in order to find an answer that you want, one that is contrary to the one Monroe PD found. But why? You can't say we did it for the safety of Monroe's youth because as a community, we entrust our safety and the safety of our children to the Monroe PD every day. Your course of action baffles me. According to Board Policy 0000, these are your beliefs, one belief statement. We believe in frequently and clearly communicating the rationale for and the results of all of our actions to interested parties. However, to this date, you have not fulfilled this belief statement. We have not heard your rationale that has drastically, drastically affected our school system. So for the sake of our kids, our students, and our football players, we look forward to hearing your rationale for hiring outside counsel at the taxpayer's expense, for allowing an investigation to last for over 75 days, and for not being transparent with the residents of Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Hi. Diana Champagne, 2 Lazybrook Road. As you know, I am in full support of the football coaches, but also of our administration, and I feel this is going on for way too long and at the expense of our program, our players, our students, and the townspeople. My questions to you today are: Why did the board see it necessary to hire an outside investigator and not attempt to resolve the issues themselves? Isn't this one reason you are elected to resolve these types of issues? What is the purpose and justification for this review and investigation? Two, the cost of an outside investigator is very expensive. Fiscal responsibility should be at the forefront. So where are these funds coming from to cover the expense? What are the programs, what programs will be in jeopardy and considered to be cut so the board can cover this expense? Because as a taxpayer, I did not authorize this large expenditure and I don't want to see it as a line item on the budget referendum in May. And lastly, what is the deadline that the Board of Ed gave the investigator to have their review completed by? Now I know you won't provide me with an answer now, or the community tonight, but I do expect a response in an email in some form because we need to be heard and we need answers. Thank you.
Nicole?
Hi. Nicole Conti, 78 Lantern Drive. Just going to pull up my note. I want to be clear to the people in front of me tonight and those listening from home that we are all here advocating. Virtue signaling townspeople have attempted to turn our advocacy into what is openly being described as an angry mob. People are manipulating our support by calling it preference. They're disregarding official conclusions made by the Monroe Police Department by twisting it into conjecture. 74 days of unknown, 74 days of discord, 74 days of a disservice to the coaches, the Massey Football Program, and quite frankly, a disservice to anyone who placed a claim with this body. This is not to say false accusations should be celebrated, but if there was any validity in these claims, 74 days is unacceptable. In 74 days, countless interviews and an exhausted number of municipal investigations have been completed. This is not going away once the Board of Education releases its findings. This will now only end once accountability is firmly placed onto the Board of Education for proceeding within an investigation costing an untold thousands of taxpayers' dollars. We recently saw North Haven investigate their program. It took four days, four days and zero dollars. But this Board of Education didn't have that same faith in the Monroe Public School staff. This process has allowed a mockery to be made of two men, a great team, a winning program, and our lovely town. There is no shame in our culture. There is no shame in our support. We will always be the Massey Football family, and there is not a thing this process will do to change that, thankfully. Until Coach Christie and Coach Giordano are rightfully reinstated, we are not Massey yet. Team first.
Anyone else for public participation? Come on down, please. Hi, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you go ahead.
I am Melissa Roy, 11 Pilgrim Lane. Hello. I've known Eric Giordano for many years. I know that G has the biggest heart. He has the compassion for his job, but most importantly, the kids. He knows how to connect and communicate with all types of kids, whether it being a student in his class or a player on the field. He is the true definition of a mentor, teacher, coach, and friend. I'm here to share with you a couple of examples. My son Stead was lucky enough to have Mr. G for 7th grade English. Stead and G formed a very strong bond, and from there, Mr. G became Coach G in high school. My son had struggles, and G knew that, but no matter how busy life is, G always reached out to him. At 25, my son passed away tragically. My family and I agreed that G was the perfect person to stand up and share his eulogy. It was the most heartfelt speech you can imagine. In 2022, the opening home football game, both Coach Christie and Coach G put on a ceremony in honor of my son and presented me with Stead's framed jersey. These men care, and they treat them like their own. Last year, my niece Izzy was a senior. Mr. G asked her to start bringing her brother by his classroom. My nephew William was a sophomore. My nephew is autistic. G wanted to make sure that William knew him and he had a safe place to go, especially when Izzy graduated. After that, William spent every day in Mr. G's classroom eating lunch with him. Not only did G sacrifice his free period, but he let William know he was there no matter what. William is a junior now, and he has special needs. He doesn't have friends, and he doesn't have Mr. G for a safe place. This is a shame. You are not only hurting the coaches, but you are hurting the kids. The kids need their teacher back, and the players need their coaches back. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak, sir? Hi, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Cody Hoskins, 93, Old Newtown Road. I'm going to be brief because otherwise I'll end up in tears up here. But um, so I've known both these men for a better part of 20 years. G, when I got to high school, Mr. Christie, Pop Warner. And you know, I just wanted to write a couple of things down and, and talk about what character means as a Massey Football player and what these guys brought, not just to me, but to, you know, anyone that they've dealt with. They're both passionate men. Now, sometimes that passion can be misconstrued, but it's always directed towards, number one, the betterment of the kids, and number two, the betterment of the program overall. Character, right? What it means to be a Massey Football player. When you go through that program, you truly take a child and turn them into a man. You know, I'm a teacher now as well. I still coach in this district. I'm a father now, and I owe a lot of that to those men in those crucial developmental years that helped shape me and turn me into the man that I am today. Respect for those that are above you and those that are below you. It goes both ways. Accountability, something that's getting harder and harder to, to work into a practice, work into a classroom these days. Effort, both on and off the field, was something that, you know, was paramount for both, both of these guys. And I just hope that we, we come to the right decision here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi, sir. Go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Christie, 52 Stable Ridge Road. My father is Steve Christie. The coast has been placed in temporary leave along with Eric Giordano. I'm not sure why this was done, as nothing has really been brought to light on your end or anyone doing this investigation. My father has been a staple in this town, coaching for 20-plus years with zero instances ever, and that includes quite a while in youth football, where parents tend to be a little more judgmental. However, when it comes to my father, I'm sure, you know, you'll think anything I say is biased and that's fair, even though hundreds of other parents and players have stepped forward to voice their disgust with the situation. However, I need to make sure you realize how much this man cares about his players. My father goes above and beyond for these kids and truly wants them to win, not just on the field, but in life. He would constantly be bringing dinners to Harding High School because the kids couldn't afford food, to the point where my mother would sometimes get upset at how much it was costing them. When she died, every player was there in uniform to bury her. If that's not love and respect for a coach, I just don't know what is anymore. When it comes to Eric Giordano, I haven't known him my whole life, but he feels like a big brother to me to this day. When I was a senior playing Massey Football, he came to coach our offensive line that year. We went from being a group of discombobulated individuals to a unit of brothers, excuse me, to a unit of brothers. This was only accomplished through hard work, accountability, and the respect we had for Eric Giordano as he played a major role in shaping us to be successful men and athletes. Eric was always appropriate and always gave his all to the players. He would bring us food, like my father, before games if we forgot anything, and was always available to talk football anytime and was always there for any emotional support we may have needed during the season or after. I still talk with G every few months just to check in and see how life's going. I consider him family. I'm sure you're receiving plenty of letters, and this is just another speech, but I felt I needed to at least say something regarding my father and Eric Giordano. I am very concerned about the state of the school system and where things are going if we continue to let this happen. This is an embarrassment to the system and needs to be addressed immediately. I hope you take notice of all these people and their support and make the right decisions sooner than later, not only for the sake of my father and Eric, but for these kids who have dedicated years to this program and are now losing out on two of their biggest assets. In the debate, it was mentioned that fiscal responsibility was extremely important. It's interesting. The school's internal investigation was closed, finding no issue. The police investigation was closed, finding again, no issue. So why is this even happening in the first place? How is this investigation fiscally responsible when it's not even justifiable? I'll leave you with one last thing that my father truly believes in. If you stand for nothing, you fall for everything.
Finish.
I relaxed it.
I wanted you to finish.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, right? He wasn't telling you to finish. He said, take your time. He was saying to take your time to finish. He wasn't, he wasn't trying to shortchange you.
No. No, no, no. I wasn't cutting you off. I wanted you to have the time to finish.
Okay, well, you know.
That's okay.
No problem.
Yep, yep. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. Everybody, we hear you and we're moving on with the meeting. Okay, we're going to move on with the report of the chairman. Joe, we have student representatives you want to introduce. We'll let them clear out for a minute.
As they make their way over to the table, I'm going to have, actually, Steve is here tonight to introduce each of the, our new board reps, and I think each of the board reps are, might say, a little bit about, a bit for themselves.
So I'd like to, you know Eric, but I'd like to introduce you to Shivani Anand and Arik Rama. They are juniors at Massey. They are both involved in student government. Shivani is involved in orchestra as well as robotics. And Arik, I don't know if you've read any of his writings for Bill Bittar, but he has written for the Monroe Sun. He's also a member of the Philosophy Club and kind of the head of the Ethics Bowl. And if you remember, we did send a team down to the national championship ship at University of North Carolina last year. So I'll let him tell you a little bit more, but they can tell you a little bit more about themselves, but I'm sure you'd be happy with the great new additions to, to the board.
Yes, a welcome. Thank you very much. You can stay right there for now. Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything to add to that, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Board, any questions on the minutes that were in the packet? Dennis, the correction was in there?
Yeah, the correction.
Okay, any questions to Joe or Ron about warrants and wires? Anything at all? Okay, Joe or Ron, you want to talk about the budget transfers? I think it was pretty obvious, but I should just ask any questions about it? It was in the packet?
It was in the consent agenda, yeah.
Yeah. No? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by Jerry. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hi, unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the reports of the committees, starting with our student representatives. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Monroe Board of Education. I hope you're having a magnificent Monday. Since my last time here, this year at Massey has officially begun with a bang. Students, including myself, have successfully transitioned in the next exciting chapter of our lives at high school. Personally, I'm looking forward to the Capsule Project, where I hope to delve deeper into my potential career options, but even better would be the new cafeteria food. The new lunch options have even tempted me to try something besides the original chicken tenders and fries.
As my friend Eric here said, we're starting a new year at high school, and I'm not going to lie to you and say it's been wholly easy. We're starting a junior year, and it's been tough, but I know it's all worth it in the end, and I'm challenging myself, and I'm excited to see what this new year brings.
Good evening. I, as Arik said, junior year, lot of new responsibilities, but I guess that kind of shows us how much we can actually accomplish when a lot is put on our shoulders. I've got to say, one thing that's really been helping me a lot is people services. A lot of the counselor meetings, and of course, there are so many colleges coming to visit every single day. I find, I'm finding that every week, there's at least one college that I'm interested in, and I think that's really helpful. Okay, I also have a sports report for the past two weeks. So football won their first game of the year against Stratford. Boy soccer won against Abbott Tech, and girl soccer against New Fairfield. Girls swim won all three of their meets against Bonnell, Bethel, and Shelton. And girls volleyball won against West Hill and Norwalk. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Do any board members have any reports yet? You know, we're still rolling here. Health and safety is coming up soon. No reports? Okay, we're going to move on to the report of the superintendent. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm going to kick it over to Ron for, if anyone has any questions about the August Fund Activity Statement, and then just to give a, a quick update on our fiscal '23 budget.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot to expand on the August statement at this point. We're just getting going with the current fiscal year, so. We will have some budget transfers for you next meeting to move some money around. That will be above the $10,000, but just to kind of set the table for that. If not, we'll move right to 2023. So the...
I'm sorry, is that it goes out the end of the year, or is that for August?
The budget transfers will be for the current fiscal year, 2023. So, 2024.
Got it.
Regarding 2023, the surplus, final surplus was $590,705.57. We, we did broach the subject with the Board of Finance last meeting to have some of those funds transferred for the three items we had, you know, discussed, the feasibility study, the...
Cameras.
The cameras in the press box, yeah. So that'll, that'll be addressed at the meeting on Thursday. That's pretty much it for 2023. I don't know if anyone's, you know, so if you net the, the, the transfer request isn't necessarily coming from our surplus, it's coming from the overall surplus, but we, you know, when you net the two, we're, we're still, you know, giving money back to the towns general fund at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron or Joe at all on these? No?
Ron, do you anticipate a vote on those items from Board Finance?
Do I anticipate a vote? Yes, I do. Yeah. The, the town will be looking to transfer funds also. So it'll be, some of, some of the transfer will probably be a combined transfer for capital projects.
It'd be great if they vote in favor of it. It'll help us out a lot. We'll get those projects moving a lot sooner, and the town will have the bond for it. So it's a pop, it's a plus for everybody.
Just a follow-up. Once, if approved, would, is there a timeline in place that we would look to start implementing those?
Yeah, so the facility study, we've got the RFQ pretty much ready to go out. So that, that'll, that'll go. We have a walkthrough down at the field. Is it this Friday or next Friday? I think it's next Friday.
Next Friday.
Because that one with having these funds, you know, the tricky thing last year, I'm trying to get this, is we were trying to fundraise for the press, for everything, and the timing was horrible. Now that we know, if we have a funding mechanism, we'll, we'll primarily be just fundraising for the, the screen itself. So we're going to have a walkthrough next, next, next Friday, just to see what we're going through, because there's a small window that we have to work through to get this in. If we're, if there's time in late winter, early spring that we can get it done, where it doesn't, you know, disturb, you know, spring athletics. If not, we'd probably have to start it right after, right after graduation. But we want to set the table now, so as soon as, as soon as we get the go-ahead, we can get moving on that, and there's no, there's no delay. So it gives us, the more lead time we have, the better.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you, Joe. We have no unfinished business, so we're going to move to new business, which is policies first review. I'm going to turn it over to Shannon for, you can brief us on the three policies, and we'll open it up to discussion as you go through each one.
Okay, okay, great. The first one is policy involvement, which is revised, just to add some Cabe required language in there, updated language to remote learning and parent conferences with the concerns over students missing out on learning during the pandemic. There is language in this policy to ensure parent communication is happening early on throughout a leave should we go remote again. And the second one, substitute teachers revised. Again, it's adding some Cabe required language, updated language to meet the new requirements. With the shortage of substitute teachers, we can now have someone in our classroom for 60 days to allow for continuity for the students and more flexibility for districts. The last one is a new one, and it's regarding metal detectors, and the policy committee voted, as we do with all of our policies, to bring it to the board for review and for discussion. So that's, I just kind of wanted to be clear on that. This one is, it's a new policy to allow the high school administrators to use a metal detector wand... This one is, it's a new policy to allow the high school administrators to use a metal detector wand to search suspected students of having vapes in school. And it's on my note that Steve Svenson's here, if we, if we wanted, you know, had any questions for him or anything, but we just wanted to vote to bring it to the board for discussion, and we anticipate that there's gonna be discussion.
Okay, if I can start with, any questions for, I'm sorry, first of all, Christine, do you have anything to add to that?
For which one?
About the three, no?
No, the three. The parent involvement really was just the wording of adding that if, if you went into remote learning, the state states that you have to have like a com, a virtual conference 60 days right after you went into virtual. So that's really just, that's the main piece of that. Extra parent conference. Extra parent conference, that's in the parent involvement piece. And the substitute teachers, exactly, it was just extending the time, and then it would just, I think reverting back to the requirement of where you needed a bachelor's degree again, where the, during COVID, they allowed you to not have a bachelor's degree, now it's back to the old. And then the metal detectors.
We'll get into that.
We'll get into that.
Jerry?
My colleagues answered it awesomely, I mean, this is what, the first two, as you said, were straightforward. The third one, that's why we're bringing you to the full board.
Okay, okay, thank you, I just wanted to go through everybody on policy committee to, to put in their two cents for a second. The, the new one on the use of metal detectors, just to give everybody a little background on that. With some surplus funds, we bought a couple of the handheld wands, and because the funds were available for that, they're not expensive at all, so wands were purchased, but obviously, we needed to put a pause on them until we can, we can think about it and discuss a policy with it. So if I can start the discussion, because I can, I'm in favor of the wands. It avoids a pat-down, which is very intrusive, when you start putting your hands on people. It opens up entirely another can of worms and causes other issues. So I'm in favor of the wands, you know, obviously with restrictions. I'd like to say that I think part of our discussion tonight should not just be about students. I think it should include every single person on district property, whether it's, you know, staff, vendors, visitors. I think if there's any reasonable suspicion that comes up for anything, because, because it's not just vapes, right? It could be used for anything else, you know, God forbid weapons, but I think we shouldn't restrict the policy to just students. It should be anyone on school grounds for, for all events, during school time, for all events and everything like that. And obviously, that's gonna lead into some discussions with Monroe Police Department and our union representatives to discuss any concerns that they have. And I would highly recommend, Joe, that we get a couple people and meet with Monroe PD, because obviously, if they could have a less intrusive search and use the wands, if a student or, again, anyone on our school property, any adult at all, a vendor, a visitor, or anyone is suspected of having anything, it's much less intrusive than a pat-down, and it could be privately done, and, which I think should be in the policy too, as private as possibly unless it's an urgent exigent circumstance. But are we gonna include our SROs and ASROs in that?
It's not included in this policy.
Right.
We took law enforcement out, this was just for the administrative staff. And Steve can speak to it, but it's very specific administrative staff that would be using this.
Right, so do we wanna have that discussion? Because obviously, school officials would be an administrative procedure, an administrative disciplinary action possibly. Police are involved, it could open up criminal instances.
Do the police have their own policy on?
I, I think, yes, they're, they're under obviously state law.
Right.
And US Supreme Court decisions, but we also need to take a look at that MOU with Monroe PD too. Because certainly, it is not the job of an administrator to approach someone if they are suspected of having a weapon on them.
Right.
That's the job for a, a police officer. But certainly, an administrative issue, we would devote to the school official, administrator. So just to open it up with that, Alan, go ahead.
Joe, how are other superintendents in the area handling this?
I don't know if anyone else has metal wands right now, Steve. I know you talked to the Western Connecticut group, I don't, I don't know if it even does. So we would be kind of on the forefront with this and being proactive. I mean, the, I think it's one of the biggest, you know, complaints at the high school year in and year out is the number of kids that are, the number of kids vaping in the bathroom. It was easy when, when we were young, if someone was smoking, there's smoke coming out, and it was pretty easy to identify. You walk into a bathroom, and there's four or five kids standing in a circle, they, they, you know, vape, and then stick it up their, up their shirt or in their, in their pocket, and you can't find it, so. So, you know, in terms of, to answer your question, Alan, I don't know exactly, I think we'd be on the forefront of this if we were doing this more specifically to address, I know that's the key issue that, that we wanted to address. In terms of, in terms of the police, I, I can talk to. Captain McCallik or Chief White. One of the, I think one of the issues could be the burden of proof that you need to do a search. The Supreme Court case, New Jersey versus TLO, is the Supreme Court case that gave school districts kind of a little bit lower threshold, or a little bit lower burden of proof, and they need reasonable suspicion as compared to a, a police that need probable cause, which is a little bit higher burden of proof to, to do a search.
So to that, to that point, since we're not police, and we have to defer to, to police, and this would be a vaping-only policy, or vaping and weapons, or students only? I mean, you can't suspend visitors from attending, and that's what the policy says, we're gonna suspend, if, if they refuse to be. I mean, you can kick them off campus, but you know, that's not our, I mean, you can state it, but your enforcement is a little limited, right? So this really is geared for people who are part of the school system, right?
That's up to us, we can make this policy only about students and only about administrators if we want to.
All right, well, if you're going to make it beyond that, I just suggest, if, if it's more in the police purview, I think we have to have that discussion first, and maybe it's a separate policy, is what I'm thinking.
Could be, yeah.
What, what is the harm of, if there's, if there's an adult, let's say, at a football game vaping? What's, what's the harm in that, technically?
It's purely policy, Justin, yeah, smoke-free campus.
So this, this seems like it's.
Do you want to open up that can of worms or not?
Yeah, I mean, it's lending itself, obviously, we're trying to protect the students, right? I mean, that's the, that's the goal, I would imagine, so rather than, I think you start to open up a pretty big rabbit hole. You start saying adults can't do it.
I don't see us, yeah, starting wand and kick out people unless it's, you know, for that.
Well, school property.
It is, it is, and we can, right, that's the bottom line, but I don't see us going to that extreme, I just, I hope not.
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have your?
Yeah, I think I would just like to clear up, you know, what this looks like when we say school officials, you know, who is actually doing this?
Principals and assistant, principals and assistant principals.
Yeah, just be principal and assistant principals.
And then my follow-up that would be, you know, what, what would be justifiable cause to, you know, have a search?
So you go into a bathroom, there's, you know, three students in one stall, you know, the smell of, instead of cigarette smoke, the smell of fruit is in the air. You know, we would bring all three down, search them, you know, but, you know, it could be, you know, we don't do any kind of intrusive search job, and we know somebody has it, you know, but bottom line is, you know, nine times out of 10, we're not finding it.
Right, right now, in that scenario, you would have to say to them, okay, who has it?
Right.
Not me. And unless you lay hands on a student, which is very intrusive and we want to avoid, then it's, okay, that's it. With a wand, you can just wand them and, and find it, whether it's in, it's in a pocket, or undergarment, or a backpack. That's it, so if we wanna keep it written the way it is, then that's what I need to hear from everybody. If we're just comfortable with students and administrator use only, that's gonna be absolutely it. Or do we wanna, at least in, in the policy, say that if it is needed for something more serious, at any point with any person, we could do that. Right now, it's, it's just written for administrators and students.
Well.
Right, but.
So Jeff pretty much asked two of the things already that I think like would need to be clarified if, if this were in favor of, people were in favor of voting for it, but who is authorized to use it, for what purpose, and who is subject to being searched? If this was something that people wanted to, to vote on, I think it's, it would need more clarity.
This policy as written is in the 5,000 series, which is our students. If, if we wanted a, a policy on staff, and I'm not necessarily suggesting we do, but if we did, that would go in the 4,000 series, you could have two policies. But as it's written right now, it's written as, as, in the 5,000 series, as a student policy.
I'm just saying it's a tool, so do we wanna limit it or not? Because it would be less intrusive for the police as well.
What's the current policy for staff as far as vaping and having a vape pin or whatever on them?
I mean, it's a, these are tobacco-free.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I mean.
I mean, I've never experienced it.
I get it, but I'm just saying, you know, if we're, you know, if it is a policy, you know, and, and their, the teachers go outside and vape, smoke, whatever.
There would be disciplinary action, because you're not allowed to.
Right.
You're not allowed to do that on, on.
Is there any schools in Connecticut that you're, that are implementing this? I mean, I know you said it to superintendent, Fairfield County, no one has.
There are, there are, there are plenty of schools that have metal detectors. You know, I think you can find that more in some of your urban areas and whatnot, but those are like the walkthrough metal detectors.
Right, but wands.
But not.
You were gonna look that up, Sheila, right?
Yeah, I found a bunch that have the metal detector piece, but not the specific for the wands.
I would be surprised if they didn't have wands at athletic events though, no? Even at athletic, athletic events, no wands?
I've never seen it.
So speaking of, I mean, how would that work in an athletic arena, or a football game, basketball game, whatever? I think, I believe it says that in the policy, it's randomly, but one every third person can be.
So, so reasonable suspicion is, or random, it could be, it could be a number of things. So it's, this is a search, in the same, in the same way that our breathalyzers are a search. So how we deal with the breathalyzers at the, at events is every kid gets breathalyzed. Random could be every kid, it could be every fifth kid, it could be every other kid, it could be, you know, like I said, every kid. It just can't be, oh, this kid gives me a hard time, I'm gonna search him, that's.
Right, but I, I guess if we're.
And then the other, the other piece of it is, and I think this would more likely be the case with this, it would really, it's gonna be more used with reasonable suspicion for situations like Steve just said, or if they see something at a game or whatnot.
But if we're limiting it to principals and assistant principals only, that means that you're gonna have to be at every game, and the assistant principal at every game with the wand.
If you're gonna use it, if it's gonna be. If it's gonna be.
And right now, we have, we have, again, it's a search, the, the breathalyzers, they're used at certain events, but they're not at all. If you go to a, a football game, not every kid gets breathalyzed, well.
I don't, I don't see us winding every third person.
Yeah, I get it, I, I'm just, you know, inevitably, that will be the question.
Joe, is that consistent with the breathalyzer, only administrators?
Hold on, yes.
Sorry, Steve.
No, I was just saying, the second one down, when we have reasonable suspicion, it's when we use it. We're not gonna just pull a class at random and say, hey, guess what, you guys are getting.
Go ahead, Dennis.
And that's consistent with what we're doing with the breathalyzers?
Yes.
Administrators only.
Yes, actually, there are teachers at the prom that, one person gives them the tube that they blow into, next person gives them something else, and then the, the assistant principal are the ones actually doing the.
So shouldn't we open up the latitude to that, for same type scenario? Other individuals can do it as a breath, breathalyzer?
Well, they don't, they don't do it, they don't do it, no, no, they, it's a process when you get into the, when you get to things.
Right, so you have to give them their tube that connects to the device, and the only ones handling the device are.
The administrators.
Administrators, that's the clarity I needed to get.
There's been Supreme Court cases on this about what Joe was saying, about you have to do everybody, or some type of pattern so that you're not, you're not accused of any bias of picking out any individual adults or, or kids randomly. You have to have at least reasonable suspicion.
So if you're gonna use this at sporting events, sporting events would be students only, right?
Depends on how we word it, I don't, I don't, I think it's there just in the event that we need to use it, but I really don't. I think the primary reason for this is the vaping during school time.
What Joe was saying was with the 5,000 series, like it's student, by nature of the 5,000 series, it means it's a student policy. It is a far cry from the smoking lounge that was here when I was a student here, it's drastically different. Now, is this just for Massey, or is this gonna be for Jockey Hollow as well?
At this point, just for Massey.
Just for Massey, okay. But if there was a need, that's who, okay.
Right, because then it's.
So Julia felt a need.
It still says just school officials and student. So if we felt a need to have it at the middle school for something, then.
Okay.
That being said, do we have enough wands? How many do you, how many do we have?
Two.
Two.
I think two, so we might wanna get another one.
That's the question.
If we're gonna do Jockey Hollow.
I mean, I'm not saying to do, I was just curious how this was like, because it didn't specify high school versus.
It's not like we're doing it, we're looking for it every.
Right.
Two minutes, so probably one would do a school.
I think if, if this is something that the board wants to have as a policy, that it should be more specific.
But as a board, we're dealing with an issue that we have seen in the high school principally. So this would address that at this point, to alleviate anybody's fear of going to a bathroom with people smoking, or whatever cluster there is, this would alleviate that and give you an opportunity to assess a person's, you know, use.
Right now, this gives them an administrative tool that eliminates, you know, a, a hands-on. Right now, it's written for administrators and students, so it's us, up to us to decide if you wanna just leave it at that. Jerry?
You know what, the, the whole great thing of this is to hear everything, so at a football game, at a softball game, and I know this is a 5,000 series, I got it, but you have me thinking now. When an adult is smoking, and hey, I get to know, I, I get that, I taught here, I understand that. What do we currently do at a football game, lacrosse, softball, whatever, when there is a group of parents in the corner smoking? I mean, what is the process? What do we do? You see smoke, you see vape, what, what do we do?
I gotta be honest, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't run into it yet, but if I.
If I saw it, Jerry, I would go over and kindly ask them, remind them it's a tobacco free, please, do it.
I mean, that's what I, I just wanted to ask you, that's what I thought it would be too.
I don't think it's an issue, I think the issue we're talking about is in-school.
Which I subscribe to, which I agree with, yeah.
Do we have any documentation in regards to how big of an issue this is, in terms of how many times have there's been suspected vaping? And anything like official from a documentation perspective?
So of our 112 suspensions last year, probably, I don't have the exact number, Justin, but 65% or more was vaping. It's a problem.
And I go back to the administrators brought this to the policy committee as a concern. It's not like the board of ed said, let's get wands to do this. So this is coming from the administrative staff that felt that it was needed.
And it's not because we wanna suspend more kids, because we're gonna find more, it's because we want them to know it's gonna be harder for them to conceal it if they choose to do it.
So it's a deterrent, you feel?
Yes.
Steve, can you just walk us through what happens currently when a student is suspected of vaping?
So same scenario, right, three kids in a stall, we bring them down to the office. We usually have two people, one in front, one in back, because kids will try and discard things along the way. You know, we keep eyes on the three, one at a time, we talk to the kids, what's yours, do you have anything? You know, we, we will have them obviously empty their pockets, you know, take their shoes off, you know, just kinda with the back of your hand, you just kinda feel the pant leg, you feel the arm. A lot of them wear hoodies, you know, so we have them reach into the hoodie, you know, we do is, we do a search, but it's, you know, doesn't always.
Yeah, what happens, or do you find yourself in a situation where they don't? I mean, are you asking for consent when you do that?
Yeah, yeah, we're saying, please empty your pocket, you know, they can refuse, you know, call the parents, you know, and we call the parents no matter what if we're searching a kid, you know, and we usually will keep the kid until the parent gets there. We ask them to come down, maybe, you know, the parent will, sometimes parents help us with the search, sometimes.
So if we, I mean, part of this is if, if they don't consent to a wand, right? Like what, it seems pretty broad as to what the potential punishment will be if someone says, I'm, I'm not going to consent to a, for whatever reason.
It's in here, I think, right?
It's in it, Jeff, I think.
So, you know, if they refuse, you know, much like if they refuse the search, we usually try to get the parents involved, help them, you know, convince the student to, you know, abide by the search, or we even say, parents, you can come down and, you know, be there, be present for it, you know. Uh, it depends on too, the circumstances by which what the person going in the bathroom at the time saw, you know, et cetera, in terms of, you know, it's one thing if you see, you know, in, in their hand, go into their pocket, whatever, versus, you know, you just see a puff of smoke above the stall and three people come out, right? It's all in what you see, too. So it's, I can't give you one pat answer to that, but it does depend. Most of the time, kids comply with the search, uh, you know, and then there's, there's, we do have some repeat offenders that we know they have it on them, but we, our searches, we're not coming up with it. You know, and that's where the metal detector, you know, I think would assist with that kind of situation. Because again, bottom line is, we want to get that, if they can't get through the day without doing this at school, we want to get them the help they need because we know what cigarettes do. We saw, we all saw the movies when we were in high school growing up. It's been what now, 13, 14 years maybe? We don't know what the long-term effects of these vapes are yet. And these kids, that, you know, if they say they're not marketing kids, they are. You know, you don't have bubble gum to market to, you know, somebody my age, you know. So these kids don't know what they're putting into their bodies, and some of them are, you know, obviously even with the THC too, you don't know what else is in it, you know. So it's really just to do everything that we can to keep it out of the school, you know, because our searches, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes I mean, I've, I've had it, you know, fall out of, you know, a girl's shirt onto the floor. Oh, what's that? You know, it's, you know, I don't have anything, I don't have anything. Oh yeah, what that just fell out of your shirt, what's that? You got me. You know, it's, it's really just a deterrent, but I, Joe.
So is there data to say that the wands work? Is that how you guys came up with the?
So we.
I'm just curious.
We did a little experiment, um, because obviously some undergarments have metal in them, you know, but we did test it with, you know, a, a pod of, you know, from a, from a vape that had been confiscated. And, you know, I don't want to embarrass Lisa Peterson, but she's listening, so it's good. You know, so we tested it and, you know, it did not go off with, without the cartridge in it, and it did go off with the cartridge in it. So a ton of data, no. But at this point, we're, we're, we're looking for anything. It actually came to us as a suggestion from our SRO, Rick Larson, who actually prefers that law enforcement stay out of our policy. But that's her opinion.
So that's where, it came from the police as a suggestion? Okay.
Dennis.
Just one question, is it disruptive to the education process?
Vaping? In bathrooms? Yeah, I mean, it is because we have students that won't go in the bathrooms in passing time because they need to go during class.
There's no educational benefit to vaping in school, is there? That I'm unaware of? So I think we're pretty clear on what we need to do.
Wow.
How do we feel? Do we want to leave it right now with students and administrators?
Yeah, I think that sounds.
Start with that.
I think, I wouldn't go anything.
Okay, does anyone have any suggestions, or do we want to get back to policy upon our second review? Do we want to, with any specific language changes? Because Shannon said you probably need a little better definition on this. So why don't I ask the board then for any, to read it and look at any specific language changes that the board as a whole can give and will give it back to policy?
Yeah.
Does that sound, sound fair?
So probably the first one and the second one will go to a vote for our next meeting, but the third one needs.
I think.
Do we agree number one and two come up for a second?
I think any feedback you guys can give us, and then when's our next policy?
October, it's, um, it's two weeks from tonight.
Okay. So by then.
It's two weeks from tonight.
In two weeks.
So it's our next meeting.
So can you provide the clarity that you had on the statements that you made before then, so we can see that, that version?
I'm sorry.
You had some questions that you wanted to have clarity on.
Who was authorized to use it, for what purpose, who is subject to being searched?
Exactly.
But that's the discussion of, of the board, like I.
All right.
I want to know how the students are going to get help. Like, it sounds like a gotcha, you're suspended. That, it sounds like a gotcha, you're suspended. How is, how is this implemented to have them get the help they need? I'm unclear on the whole thing.
So part of it, no matter what, whether you agree to this policy or not, is we connect them with social worker and add them to get them, you know, some education on the dangers and, you know, the risks of vaping. But that's, that has nothing to do with the policy.
Gotcha.
That's our practice.
Yeah, it's part of our practice of what we do.
Okay.
What is it, see, they get.
Yeah, part of it is always connecting, we always connect them with the, with Jeff Champagne, and they meet with Jeff Champagne, you know, either during their suspension or after their suspension to get some, uh, you know, to have a discussion around why they're doing it, are they addicted, and get some information if they need help and quit it. And obviously that includes the dangers of what they're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's part of what we do no matter what.
I do, thank you.
Why don't we do this? Why don't, if anyone has any suggestions on language, why don't you let me know what that is? And then Shannon and I can talk, because what we can do is we can, we can bring it up for a second review, but we can make a motion to amend the policy to say boom, 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 and get it passed so that our administrators aren't waiting another month or two to, to get this done. We have devices that could be, you know, not collecting dust. So is that okay with everybody, just to move it along a little bit? We'll get some language and just make a motion to change it, and then we can get it approved, uh, next meeting upon second review?
Okay.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. Joe, you want to talk about the PD plan?
Sure, yeah, I'm going to have Mike come up. Mike has led Monroe's Professional Development and Evaluation Committee for the last year.
Mike, are you going to use this?
Yes, he is. I know there's, uh, new guidelines going into place as it, as it relates to teacher evaluation. Mike's going to go over those guidelines. Basically, um, these new guidelines represent a model for teachers and administrators that officially begin in 24, 25, but we're looking to implement them this year if possible. One of the things we really like about them is they focus on what's important, the foundational elements of teaching and learning, which is continuous improvement for, for teachers, professional learning, and reflective practice, all to help student success. So while it might give the, the details of the plan, which I know I believe we need to.
Sure.
Agree on before we, yeah.
Hey, everybody. Um, every year, we have to come in before the Board of Ed for approval for our TVAL plan as a district. Um, this time last year, I stood in front of you and I said the board, uh, the Connecticut Board of Ed had been working for two years for a new, um, a new TVAL plan, and that it would be in place for this fall. And then it's not in place for this fall. Um, it did get approved by the legislature late in spring, so they moved it another year. So although they started to release the details of the plan over the course of the winter and the spring, um, it's not going to go into complete effect until next year. We, as a district, um, put together our, you know, reconvened our PDEC committee, as we do all the time, but we convened it, reconvened it with some new energy this year because we knew that these new guidelines were coming to effect through the legislature, um, and we thought it was going to be for the fall, but it's going to be for next year. Included with that also is the elimination of something, Ed Reflect. Ed Reflect was the, uh, reporting platform that we used as a state. So another great thing that the state had was that Ed Reflect was eliminated, and yet they didn't put the new things into place when it was eliminated. So we don't have a platform, um, but we still have the old, you know, flexibilities in place. So we were working with that, too. So there's, there's going to be some transition to, you know, a Google Classroom, Google Docs format for us instead of using that platform, because that's what most districts are really moving on to. Um, so we worked in the spring and related to the new guidelines, uh, our committee was balanced with, you know, teachers and administrators, both co-presidents of, the teachers' union was on there, um, there were members from every single grade, you know, grade band, and every single school was on there. We really worked together to look at these new guidelines. And then when the state, around May and June, instead of putting the new ones into place, extended the TVAL flexibilities. And I don't know if you remember that phrase they started using like two years ago, the TVAL flexibilities? When COVID came into play, they made us a little bit more flexible with teacher evaluation because of what teachers were facing on a daily basis. So they said, listen, we're just going to do these TVAL flexibilities for one more year due to the fact that we're not adopting these for another year, although we had told you we were. So what we did, and we looked at this last week, actually, as a PDEC committee, because all this, of course, happened over the course of the summer. So last week, as a PDEC committee, we looked at the work that we had done, and we really transferred it, really applied it to be able to work within the TVAL flexibilities for this coming year. So just specifics with that, that as has been the, the case in the past, teachers are developing one student learning goal, and they're going to have a minimum of two indicators with them, um, looking at one of three areas. And this is where some of the flexibility is coming into play, where we're looking at what's called the Danielson Framework for Teaching, um, which is a framework, a teaching rubric that is nationally known, and actually was the basis for the Connecticut Core of Teaching, was the Danielson Rubric. Um, and with these new guidelines, we all have to choose new rubrics, new standards to work off of. And we, as a committee, chose the Danielson model. And what's nice about it is it really focuses on three different areas that teachers can choose, um, for their goals, learning environment, engagement, or feedback. Uh, they're going to choose a learning goal for the year, and then they're going to have to develop two indicators or more, two indicators and measures to say like, how did I meet that? How did I work with my students to meet that? Um, and show the accomplishment through meetings with their evaluator. Administrators develop two goals with a minimum of one indicator each, um, and the administrators use the Connecticut Leader Evaluation Support Rubric, and they choose from one of those four areas for each one of those goals that are listed there. So that's 45% of, of the final ratings. The other 40% is the performance in practice, and that comes out of classroom observations. Um, and this hasn't really changed from last year. So there's a minimum of two informal observations, um, and a review of practice for teachers who have more than two years of experience, who are tenured in our district. Um, and then there is a minimum of one formal and two informal observations to our new teachers, um, to make sure we get it. And those are minimums. So certainly, the thing about teacher evaluation and teacher support and professional development is this idea that we're going to be in classrooms as often as we need to be in classrooms and support teachers. Um, as it is, you know, we're really encouraged as evaluators, um, whether you're the direct evaluator or simply an administrator, to visit classrooms and give feedback throughout the year, um, to make sure that they're feeling supported, too. And what's great about it is our teachers is they love people that come into their classrooms. I spent all day on Friday from 7:30 to 3:30, went to every single school and was, bounced around classrooms, and teachers were really appreciative, and got to have good conversations with them about what I was seeing in the classroom. And that's the kind of culture we really want to support, and that's what this plan does for us. Um, for administrators, there's a minimum of two site visits by their evaluator and also an artifact review during the course, um, course of the year with, um, that's for administrators with two or more years of experience. There's a minimum of three site visits and two artifact reviews for our newest administrators in the district. Any questions about those two areas for Ron?
Yeah, one question.
Yeah, what's up?
Is it going to be more laborious or less laborious? So we get evaluations done promptly and accurately?
Okay, so what's great about, what was terrible about Ed Reflect was it was the most laborious platform ever. And you had to open up and do 10,000 different things to get to it. What we developed as a committee was one Google Doc that you start the year and you just move through it. And so everything is all in one, on one place. They go to a Google Classroom that their evaluator invites them to, so all the material's in one place, and it's much less laborious and much more sort of personalized to what every teacher needs. You know, what was happening before was there was like a, a department, and there was some really good work that happened, and the department say, hey, we're really going to focus on this this year. But some things that came out of that was like, you know, in a department of 15 people, five people might need this, and another five needs this, and two need this, and three need this. And this sort of allows us to have that personalization. And the evaluators say, listen, these are some struggles last year. Let's really focus on this, this year coming forward. And it gives us that kind of flexibility with it, which is great. So that's, you know, 85%. The other 15% is 10% is evidence of engagement with families and contribution to school culture, which is one of our goals, you know, as a district that we're going to talk about. Um, and that is something that they have to reflect upon at their mid-year and at their end of year. And the other 5% is simply an aggregate of the schools, all the ratings. Like, you take an average of what everybody got at MASC, and everybody sort of shares that. So we're sort of all in the same pot together and working together on that. Um, so at the end of this year, there will be summative ratings, as we have every year, um, for the last 12 years. Yep, I think 2012. Yep, 12 years. Um, so it's a holistic review of everything, and, you know, it is also quantitative. You know, we say, how did they do in these, these areas? You multiply it by 40%, 45%. Um, this is the final year of those summative ratings like that in the 4-3-2-1. Um, they did just officially release the new plan as of Friday, but I won't bother you with that, you'll be bothered with that next year. Uh, but this is the last year of that really sort of mechanical 4-3-2-1, um, rating system. But we do have to do that for this year also, while these flexibilities are in place this year. Um, before I move on to the district goals, any questions about 100%? All right. Um, one of the most important things that I think is great about our new plan, and it was great that Joe really championed with us this year, is our district goals are all these theories of action, um, these if-then statements. So, you know, you see this district goal about if we work together, which addresses collective teacher efficacy, to create classroom experiences that are based on principles of inquiry and effective communication, then our students will become curious learners, persistent problem solvers, and critical thinkers. It's an if-then. It's the state they heard me talk about.
They did.
And so all the goals for the schools are like that, and they also have the added as measured by, so that's where the, um, the outcomes come in. And then all the teachers' goals will also reflect the if-then-as-measured-by structure, which really provides consistency and action. You know, that's why it's called the Theory of Action. So that's our goal that has to do with, um, vision of the graduate and inquiry. This is, if we consistently support the school community in expressing and regulating their emotions, then learners will demonstrate empathy, compassion, and self-awareness in their environment. Still hear the, uh, the echoes of the vision of the graduate through all these. And the last one, if we design curricular experiences centered around the learning progressions of Monroe's Vision of the Graduate, then students will possess the skills necessary to lead rich, productive lives. Um, so those are the three goals. Everything sort of comes from those goals for the year. Um, we've already been doing a lot of conversations. The PDEC last week was in agreement with these proposed CSD flexibilities and voted for them to be approved unanimously, and so I will leave you at that for any questions about these.
So this is going to be quicker?
It will be quicker, and hopefully more meaningful, because what we know is more consistent feedback more frequently is what brings about change.
Any other questions for, for Joe or any?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, can I have a motion? The Monroe Board of Education confirms mutual agreement with the Monroe Public School District's PD TVAL Committee for the Connecticut State Department of Education's 2023-2024 Teacher Evaluation Flexibilities with Anticipated Approval from the CSDE, CSDE. Jerry, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Mr. Stevens?
Motion for adjournment, Mr. Chair.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Christine. Any discussion? Good night, everybody.